A couple minutes late. Welcome everybody to the August 11th budget meeting. We will call the meeting to order and we will start with the roll call.
Branch?
Here.
Castalis?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Essie?
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Here.
Okay. Let's go right into the budget. Okay, let bring us right into the budget. I just wanted to remind everybody today is the day we're going to try to move on with either taking or adding to the parking lot. And all's I ask is that if you take something off or put something on the parking lot as an expense that you do find an offset, but it doesn't have to be done tonight, we will give you till the end of the next meeting. Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to take it back off the parking lot. And the same goes with revenue. If you reduce revenues, then we'll have to reduce expenses too, so we'll treat that the same way. So I just wanted to remind you of that. And we are going to start with a couple parking lot issues right off the bat, and I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. Good evening. One of the corrections that needs to be made, Mr., our Councilman Castalis brought up during the budget overviews on page 203 under Public Works Streets, the natural gas, the city administrator and the mayor approved budget was 1,700 and it should have been 17,000. That was simply a data entry error. So to correct that, we need to add 15,300 to the natural gas line under streets, which is the first line under the expense changes there. The offset that we've identified, we just received the final Cole County assessment after Board of Equalization hearings. And having those new numbers and putting that into the history of our property tax, assessed valuation times the tax rate and what percentage we normally collect of that potential, which is around 95%, can increase that property tax revenue line by 15,300 to offset that increase in the utility line for the correction. So if anyone has any questions on that?
All right, well first, if we could get a motion, you know, I'd like to treat it separately. I'd like to get a motion, first of all, we'll do this for all, everything, to go ahead and add the expenses in there, and then we'll get a motion to get the offset. Councilman Castalis?
I'd like to make a motion that we increase the expense on natural gas for the street department by 15,300 dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, move seconded. Is there any discussion on that topic? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against. All right, that passes. Now we'll address the expense, or sorry, the revenue side to increase the revenues that Mrs. Miller brought up regarding the property taxes. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All right, move in seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against. Aye, he's got it. All right, so we'll move on to our next item on the parking lot up there, and I'll have Mr. Kroll lead us through that.
Thank you. The other item that was brought up last time was the halftime administrative assistant portion of that salary taken out of the self-insurance fund. I want to make it clear that that position does not impact the rates. Rates were the same without that. But one of the things we could do is to pull, the suggestion I think Councilmember Castalis mentioned was to pull that back over into the general fund side, and we could do that with some funding from two different areas, one of which is savings from a new administrative assistant that we hired. She will be starting at the minimum, and the person that was in there before was close to the top of the range. So there's savings there of 17,6211, is that? And then the wellness program, which is on the agenda for a year consideration, first reading Monday night, came in less than what was budgeted, so there's some savings there, about $6,700. So those two added together would make up the difference needed to move that position over.
All right, thank you. At this time, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so move in seconded, discussion. Is there any discussion on the topic? And this is just to take the position from, where is it now?
Self-insured.
Self-insured over to the general fund.
Fund over to move, and fund it with some salary savings, essentially salary savings.
Yeah, we'll make that motion to change the bottom part of that. But that first part to move it over to the general fund, that is the motion? Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against. All right, that passes. Now we'll address the other side to, for the funding part of it. Could you repeat that? Mr. Kroll?
Right, and the funding will come from some salary savings from an administrative assistant position of 17,652.11 and some wellness program savings with the new contract. And again, that's assuming you all are going to approve that as it goes through the process. That dollar amount was $6,700.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, now discussion. Is there any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against. Passes. All right, at this time, we've made those changes, so the parking lot, so to speak, is going to be zeroed out, and we're ready to make any discussion. Welcome any adjustments that may be coming, and I'm, the floor is open. Councilman Castalis?
Thank you. The city administrator and the mayor have a 2% pay raise across the board in there. I'd like to move that and set those funds aside with the 575,000 they have set aside for after the wage and classification study's done. That way, if there's any positions that are overpaid now, or overcompensated now, or adequately compensated when the study's done, we're set with that and we're not giving them more. And we have that pool of money to then make all the adjustments.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there is a second. Now discussion. All right. Councilor Mahalovich?
I'd like the city administrator to respond to how he intended to deal with that.
How to tell, intended to, well, how intended to deal with, I'm sorry, which?
The 2% until, are you going to distribute it before the?
Yes, yeah, let me talk. I think the 2%, the intention was to have that across the board and happen upon adoption when the budget goes into effect. I think that that's important, really, just to maintain where we are. And granted, there may be some positions that may be a little bit over, but I think a lot of that gets adjusted as part of that classification and compensation plan review. The 2% in my view, really, is the cost of living helps maintain where we are, particularly given that the county did, what, 5% here recently, and the state did an increase recently. So that's kind of where my thinking was on separating those two components. The classification compensation plan, as Councilmember Castalis noted, there's another, an amount of money to address that, but we really don't know what that answer is yet. Does that answer the question? No?
Yes, partially, yeah. So the other portion, the other 2%, how will you handle that if approved? Will you wait till the compensation study's completed, then distributed, or is that the intent?
No, there's one 2%, there is a 2% across the board that would become effective upon adoption, when the budget becomes effective, November 1st. So that's the 2%. And then there's the classification compensation amount of money, 575, is that what we have in there? And that will need to be allocated. There's a long, a discussion that comes along with the recommendations from the classification and compensation consultant. I don't know what those are yet. So there's some adjustments that kind of getting people moved into the ranges, and I just don't know what those are yet, and it's really just an estimated number.
So maybe I'm not following, maybe, but, okay, so we have this chunk of money.
Right.
And the compensation study, if it's completed in January or February, then would you backfill that? Will it be retroactive for the entire?
That's a, I think that's a discussion that needs to be held at the time.
Do you know when the, when do you anticipate the study and the discussion to occur so we know how to distribute the money? Would it be more like February?
Oh, I don't think it'll be February. I don't know if Gail has a more recent update from them. We were hoping October-ish, maybe, but.
I thought it was this year.
Yeah, that's what we're planning, but, you know, I don't know what problems they may have come into or not.
Yeah, I haven't received any new updates. The last time I talked to them, probably not last week, the week before, probably two weeks ago, they said everything was on schedule. They are working on the salary studies and the benefit studies, working with other organizations to get feedback from them, so that they have some comparisons. So I think that the date, which is very loose, was the fall, so.
And they're well aware of our budget process and timing, and that was one of the considerations that we made when looking at that particular consultant. But we also want to talk with the employee committee and we'll get recommendations and talk. I don't know what the numbers are, so I'm still not getting it, sorry. What?
No, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I think, hopefully, it's before budget time, but there's a separate amount of money in this budget to, in the budget we're talking about, 17, to accommodate what that recommendation. Now, there's going to be all kinds of options to talk about when that time comes. The 2% is separate from that. I think the 2%, my recommendation I made to the mayor and the recommendation that she made to you all was that that 2% go across the board, and that really is to kind of keep the ranges going, to help with the cost of living, and we talked a little bit about the health insurance piece, and we have an increased plan for that, and don't know all those rates yet, so helps offset some of that.
I assume by the way you structured it, the 2 and 2, that the salary study would not be available until, you know, way into the budget. Otherwise, we could just, if it were done in September, we can apply it, starting the fiscal year, off all amounts, and then address Councilman Castalis's issue by applying that November 1. That's the point being made, is that if, I understand what you're trying to do, if you felt like the discussions with regard to salary study and staff discussions and all that wouldn't occur to after November 1, then I understand what you're doing. But if we expect it to be all wrapped up before the budget starts, then we're applying both increases to the salary study and its recommendations.
The, if we do an adjustment before November, we will need to identify a source of revenue to do that. Whatever decisions are made in November, unless it's zero, those decisions will carry over. There'll be the carryover salaries that would occur after November, on November, for the new budget. So the hunk of money is to address those increases that occur in the new budget. If we make some payment adjustments before, if we do it this year, then we need to have those discussions on sources of funding for that.
I have a couple of questions.
I guess before I ask a question to Councilman Castalis, Councilman Mahalovich, where are we getting 2 and 2 from? I'm confused on that one.
I think he was saying two hunks of money, not 2%.
Okay, that's, I was like, where did that come from? I said, and then of Councilman Castalis, I'm trying to, I guess, understand what you're, what you're, like to request, and that is to, the 2% raise that's being proposed now, to hold that in a separate pool of money and then give that 2% at a later date beyond November, right? Is that what you're saying?
Somewhat. What I'm proposing is to take that, some of my money is like 502,000, I believe, and put that with the 575,000 that's set aside now for the classification and salary study, just make that one big pool of, what, a million seven, million seventy-seven, thereabouts? And when the study's done, then use that money across the board to make all the adjustments.
So you're saying, at that point, it wouldn't do, it would not be a 2%, it would be just an adjustment.
Correct.
Across the board and not a 2%.
Correct.
Councilman Harry?
Respect, Councilman Castalis. I totally disagree with that. The employees need to have that 2% across the board, as the city administrator mentioned, just for cost of living purposes. You know, you had the county, the state, get those raises. They need that 2% across the board, period. We can talk about the salary study when it's done, in my opinion, but that 2% needs to be held. Thank you.
I sort of agree with Councilman Henry as well. The 2%, I believe, they need that now. And then the study, after we learn what those numbers come back, should be, then we take a hard look at what we can do, if we can do anything at all. But at least, I think the 2% should be a priority in which we look at giving them off the top, all employees, so that's just my thoughts.
You being beginning of the budget period, which is November 1st. Yes.
Yeah, I didn't hear the question, sorry.
To apply that 2%, Councilman Graham said now, what he means is when the?
The new budget.
Right, yeah. And you take that into consideration when you have the classification compensation plan discussion too. You say, well, we already have the 2% there, but I think there's some merit, from my point of view, in making sure that employees understand that that piece is approved. Now, the other piece, like you said very well, may not, but there's discussion that needs to be held.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, and I would agree, Councilman Graham and Henry, that part of the reason that I kept that piece in the mayor's budget was, I feel that the employees are a big priority. And I want to mention something mainly for the benefit of Councilwoman Wiseman, is that last year a 2% raise was not done, but there was a lump sum. So essentially, as we are looking at the salary study, we were, I wouldn't want to say we're a year behind, but in a way we are, so this would also help, you know, if at all possible, it helps to get us a little bit closer to where we need to be, so I'd highly recommend that we keep it as it is. Thank you.
All right, further discussion? Okay, and, Ms. Powell, can we get the motion read, please?
I will try, but you can correct me if it's wrong. Councilman Castalis wants to hold off on the 2% salary increase until the 575,000 salary study is completed.
I want to hold off on the 2% raise and move that money over to the pool of money of that 575 for the, that's set aside already for the compensation study, and then do one thing once the study's done.
Can you explain a little bit more on how we would apply that? Again, say, for example, let me just throw something out there, that we determine that, you know, these employees are all underpaid by $2,000, we got to increase it all by $2,000, and then that, where does the other money come in? The 2%?
What I'm saying is you take that 2% across the board, it's like 502,000, I think it's 380,000 in the general fund, and put that with the 575 they've got set aside for, to be spread out amongst everybody after the compensation and salary study's done. Just make one large pool of money, and once the study's done, then use that to go out.
I guess my only fear is that we may not be 100% correct on the money that we have in there right now. It may be underestimated, so then we're kind of shorting some of the staff out of 2% in my opinion, because we didn't put enough money in the pools, we're going to have to go back in and find more. So then we'd have to have that discussion again as to, is that 2% on top of the money it takes to get to the, where they need to be? We're just guessing right now, educated guess, but we're kind of guessing, we hope it's close, but I'm kind of doubting that, I'd say we're probably underneath where we need to be, so that's the only thing that bothers me about it.
And part of the way I'm looking at this is, we've hired this company to give us their opinions. I'd rather wait and see what their opinion is before we react.
Councilman Henry?
I don't think this is necessarily a reaction, though, more than it is basically something that's needed to be done. They haven't, and city employees hadn't had raises since I've been on, since I've been on the council, and I'd consider last year a stipend, basically. You know, so this is, to me, this is absolutely needed. The 2%, basically, Councilman Castalis, with your proposal, that goes off the table, basically. Because if you just put that one big potty in, you don't know what, who deserves what, or what their salary increases should be until that's done, but that 2% needs to be held, that needs to be stayed in there across the board. So I.
I think your proposal, that is, you know, the way, and I don't think that's.
Councilman Graham?
And the last thing I'm going to say about it is that, and another fear that I have is that once we do get this, their proposal back, it's going to take us some time to look at it and to digest, where's the money going to come from, how are we going to enact this? And so at this point, if it takes us two months to do that, now the city employees have already lost out on 2% raise for three months. So I don't think it's going to be something we're going to get back immediately, and then at the next council meeting, so, okay, yeah, we're going to adjust everybody's pay up to this. It's going to take time to do that, and I hope the city employees understand that as well, too, that that's nothing's going to happen overnight, once we get those numbers back.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we are, looks like we're ready to vote. And everybody knows the motion, so I'm just going to go ahead and ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, all those against, say nay.
Nay.
Any other items to be added to the parking lot? Councilman Mahalovich?
Yeah, I'd like to add $27,000 in for the internship, reading statement of the internship program, and for an offset to be mentioned later.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All right, so move in seconded. Discussion.
The program's been pretty successful, I think. I think that, my only concern is we don't overburden it with, it doesn't overburden it in its administration. It's supposed to be a teaching program, yes, about our city and maybe potential employees in the future, but also about what our city does. So I appreciate the way it was ran last time, and I don't know to the degree it puts work on our city staff, but I know there's been students that have gained quite a bit of experience. Matter of fact, I think we even talked, we could have even filled a part-time GIS position with some of this labor even a year ago, so I would be in favor of this expenditure for the upcoming year.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it looks like we're ready to vote. Everybody knows, oh, Councilman?
What was the, what was the offset, Councilman Mahalovich?
The offset's going to be, yeah, a separate motion. Okay. Okay. Okay, the motion is to add, is it 17,000?
I believe it's 27,000.
27,000.
Is it incorrect, Gail?
You're talking about the pink sheet request, it's 27,558.40.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against. All right. I will go back to Councilman Mahalovich for this one. Are you going to discuss the offset today, or are we going to think on that one?
I'm going to think on that one. Did we get a word from Parks and Rec about any decisions?
Absolutely, the decision was a no decision.
I don't have a offset right now.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Mahalovich?
I don't know, are we still on the parking lot, or are we going to any of these sections within our 11 by 17 sheet?
It's, it's.
Parking lot, right?
Well, we're at the parking lot now.
We're at the parking lot now.
Okay, I'll stay in the parking lot. I won't go for a reservation yet.
We'll address that as soon as the parking lot discussion's over with today. Any other items to add to the parking lot? Councilman Graham?
Mr. Chair, I would like to, on page 113, add to the parking lot, under General, Department Police, the emergency notification system for 26,000. I think this is something that's for the.
Let's go ahead and get a.
Second.
You'll say that's a motion? Okay, we'll do that in a second. Councilman Mahalovich? Second, yeah, we'll go into a discussion. Councilman Graham?
I think that this is an emergency notification for all residents of the City of Jefferson, and this is a huge, huge safety piece, and I think as long as we can move to show that we, as a city, is putting something in place to notify our residents of emergencies, I think this is something that's very well needed.
All right, any other discussion on this?
What's the amount?
All right, well, seeing no discussion, we'll get ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against. Any other parking lot issues? Oh, Councilwoman Wiseman?
I move to include the Hyde Park Training Tower, the burn building. I think there has been some discussion about, or some emails about the economic impact of the fire safety school and how it's increased tourism in Jefferson City, and how this is an important program, and I think, I think the chief can discuss that, but I think that's an important thing that we should keep in the community, and I think that we should be able to fund with an offset to be determined.
Do you know what the amount is?
It's 187,000.
All right, thank you.
500, sorry. 187,500.
Is there a second on that one?
I second that.
All right, now discussion. Councilman Mahalovich?
I would like the chief to respond to this request, and in light of also some discussions I've had, it has, I'm told that we're only one of three states now that have this fire training school, and that's self-funded, and that the future of the fire training school may be in question just because of the lack of participation, or declining lack of participation, and the money it takes, and so regardless, if we're seeing this as a need for our own department, yes, but maybe if we're hanging our hat on the future of the fire training school, I think that may be somewhat of a gamble. Chief, could you respond? Chief, could you respond?
I think, as you stated, there are no guarantees that this particular expenditure would keep fire school here, but we are looking at every possible way that we can do that. And so this is one way that we can offer additional suppression, fire suppression activities at Hyde Park. The current facility is kind of divided up into two areas. There's the Training Tower, and there's the Burn Room, and really just that one room off to the side is where we can actually light fires. And so what we would seek to do with this is to connect the two, but take away the Burn Room, and actually build a burn facility that's connected to the Training Tower, which would allow us to burn on three levels in different areas. And so that kind of thing is pretty unique, and it would certainly draw firefighters from around the area to come participate, whether it's in fire school, or just through routine quarterly-type events, training sessions. We would try to attract other types of training opportunities as well.
Councilman Hallowich?
I did notice the building by Hyde Park, there was a key on the roof, but you, the Training Tower, did that go away, or is that what that was?
So that part is actually part of what we call the Drill Tower, and the Drill Tower Building, which we are able to do lots of things, but we can't, it's not really set up to burn, to actually have live-fire evolutions in that particular portion. The room that's in question that would be demolished and then rebuilt and connected is adjoining that facility on the other side, kind of the north side. It's kind of hard to see from the road, from Hyde Park Road, and that would give us the ability to do a lot more with the current facility. So I guess to answer your question, the roof is going to happen either way. We're doing some of that with some in-house work, and then we've made it watertight, and we're doing some, just some basic maintenance to the building to try to make the tower portion last as long as possible as well.
I guess my comment would be that it would be something that we could do. One thing is that, Mr. Hallowich, Councilman Hallowich, sorry, brought up, was that we were not sure about what the future is of the fire school, and we do have potentially to have a fund balance above 17%. We might be able to use some of that money to purchase it later, should we need it at that time. You know, I'm not saying it's a bad thing to do now, but I'm saying if we want to wait, or we don't have an offset for it, we might want to wait. So it's not that we don't want to do it, it's just that the timing might be not the best now, but that's really for you guys to determine, so. Councilman Costalis?
Thank you. Following up on what Councilman Prather was just talking about, about postponing it, what's the life expectancy of the tower as it is now?
Again, I would probably try to divide those into two different things. The tower itself, we're investing currently to try to do preventive maintenance, to make that last as long as we can. And I think we can possibly get another 10 to 15 years out of that facility. The Burn Room itself is made of concrete cinder block and has special paginate walls that resist fire, and so that facility is needing quite a bit of overhaul. The floor is spalled, the concrete's spalled from overheating. So while it's still usable, we're going to have to do something to that facility at some point in the next couple of years to make it safe to use.
Councilman Henry?
So with that being said, chief, and I hate to put you on the spot like this, but considering what we've got, what's currently in the proposed budget to be funded as far as positions, what's more important? The positions or the fire tower?
I think from a service standpoint, we would still probably say the positions are the priority.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ward?
What is the economic impact of the fire school in our community? I think I saw a number that it brings in each time, around 40,000?
The CVB's own estimates, and again, based purely on their numbers, not our number, from last year, their press release said 400,000 to the community.
Any other discussion? Councilman Henry?
I mean, I would say at this point in time, I'd like for us to look for another funding source for that particular pink sheet item. So this will probably be something that I won't-
Any other discussion? Councilman Branch?
Chief, the email that we got, was it yesterday? No, this morning, about the rejection of the grant, is that anything that, I mean, is that anything that's critical at this point, or?
I think the AFG grant that we received, turned down notice from yesterday, I forwarded out to the council this morning, was our attempt to try to kind of reset the clock on some of our hose purchases, and we used to have hose purchasing every year, and at some point that went away, and we've never really made those gains back. It is something we need to look at, and I would say that we could probably do that in a structured way over the next few budget cycles. But it is a concern, you know, we'd like to keep hose in frontline status for about 10 years, and then in reserve status for an additional 10, a total of 20 years, is our goal.
Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none, we're going to do roll call.
No.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
No.
Hussey?
Hallowich?
No.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Five aye, four nay. It's a majority vote. Five four.
So it is five four. It is now on the parking lot. So again, just kind of reminder that unless we have an offset tonight, we will need to have one by the next, end of the next meeting in order for it to stay on there, that everybody can agree with. Thank you. Any other parking lot issues? Councilwoman Ward?
I wanted to address the streetwalker worker positions. I believe last budget year, there were two that were not funded, and this year you had two pink sheets wanting two again, and we funded one, or we're proposing funding of one. Overtime is at 35,000, the same as last budget. How much by having the additional street worker, would that lower the overtime cost? And if there were a second street worker, would it lower it even more? You know, I don't know how many positions other than street workers are included in this 35,000.
You know, that overtime is mainly related to, like, snow events and other emergency-type operations, and so really just the workers are basically a level of service issue. I've said in the past that obviously, I believe they're needed just to help our level of service on the street and stormwater system. They compromise two people. We have small crews in these type jobs where they go about and do small projects. Typically, we have two people in a small crew, and then occasionally we'll combine them together. So really, the request was for two workers to get back to what we once had in the Street Division just a few years ago, and reinstitute that crew again.
I feel because of the condition of our streets and our sewers, and what we're facing with the upgrades and replacement of those, that I would like to put that second street worker on the parking lot.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved to seconded, discussion?
So what's the dollar amount on that? Do you know offhand? Is it right in front of you?
It's on page 206, Councilor.
I was trying to look at, four years ago, where we were as kind of the base for what I would call a high watermark at one time. Previous councils, previous mayors and city administrators had approved those positions. And looking at where we are today from four years ago, under the proposed budget, we went from 379 employees four years ago to 377 being proposed this time, without Parks and Rec. So that's two down, and then we had 55 part-time, and now this year, if we approve the budget as stated, it's 44. Appears that everybody is kind of back up to where they were. I think on the fire side and police side, I think there's part-time position on police. But when it comes to public works, my numbers, and I'm seeing maybe a possible error, is I had 60 full-time and 14 part-time back four years ago, and under this proposed budget, I have 57 and 11. I may be two off, actually. It might have been 75 workers you have as opposed to 60. I don't know if you have that in front of you, or you know.
What page is that?
Well, I'm actually on the personnel pages. That's in the front of the book, plus last year's budget to get the fourth year. So I think there is some evidence, Council Lady Ward, that the Street Division in public works is down from four years ago, and we're bringing most everybody up. So I think your argument proves out in terms of what we're doing in other departments.
Any other discussion? I mean, I'd like to add to that, that I think that this department does need it, and I would be in favor of adding the position, but not necessarily until I know what the offset is, whether it'd be a favor of finding an offset. By time, my plan next meeting is to start from the top of the first ones that was mentioned, and get down to the bottom, and if there's any money left by then, boy, it'd be sure be nice to do this, but like I said, we don't have all the money in the world, so we can't really get everything we want. But I'd be in favor of this, like all the other ones, but it's just whether or not we have the money to do it is a question. And like I said, you're welcome to bring up an offset tonight if you guys have it, otherwise I'm going to go and order next week how they were presented, and if you have offsets then, we will approve them. If they are not approved, we will vote to take them off the parking lot. So that being said, is there any other discussion on this particular one? Seeing none, we'll have roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hallowich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. All right, any other parking lot items? Councilman Costalis?
Yeah, I bring this one up reluctantly, because I don't think any of us really want to have a discussion on it. It was something we promised the citizens last year when we raised the GRT tax, was to come back and discuss that, whether we're going to keep it at the 6% or drop it back to the 5.65, because I know it would have an impact of about $300,000 on the revenue. So we can have the discussion, I'll go ahead and make it a motion, if we get a second, at least open a discussion on it.
What's the motion?
To return the GRT back to 5.65 from the six that we raised it to.
Second, therefore, to take a discussion.
Oh, yeah, I second it.
Okay, it's moved to seconded. Now we are going to move into discussion, and we'll start with the maker of the motion.
Yes, I made a motion for that.
Councilman Costalis, do you have anything else to add? All right. Yeah, I know Mrs. Miller had sent something to all of us, and I kind of wanted her to kind of, do you mind going back over those notes that you had sent to all of us? Because my memory's not that good.
There was a question about what the impact of that GRT tax going from 5.65 to 6%, how much additional revenue was generated year-to-date using the most current month available. Well, that was about three or four weeks ago, and at that time I had responded, but I did update it with the most recent numbers for the most recent month. So this would basically be through the month of July. And what it's showing is that, based on the new numbers, what we expect to get in for the remainder of the year, the increase itself, an annual impact, is around 276,000. So it's a little bit less than what was budgeted last year, which is the 294,000 number. Year-to-date actual receipts, the increase itself has garnered 172,377.64. So we're behind on total GRT collections because of the mild winter, but that's the difference of the going from 5.6, the 6% down, back down to 5.65%. And just to add, obviously I wasn't here, but I understand the intent was to increase the GRT tax, to garner some money for the capital replacement plan for vehicles and equipment. And just based on that, because of the total GRT tax being down lower in general, that really hasn't collected a significant amount to put toward that capital replacement plan. So I'm just offering that up, that we know you might want to see what it does for another year, and use that money for the capital replacement plan as it comes in.
Councilman Henry?
I guess that's my thought also. To me, after years, to me, it's too premature to say, to say what those differences are or where we're at as far as the GRT goes. So I would say at least, let's give it another year, and considering that information, I mean, we had heard that also in finance meeting this morning, I think it needs to stay as is at this point in time.
Any other discussion? Councilman Hallowich?
I think it's good that the council brought that up, because we do need to keep our sights on that. And we did say if we have an embarrassment of wealth, and that collects more than we thought, or our position changes, then we need to address it. I might, we just had a budget meeting this morning, or a finance meeting this morning, and that line item for franchise and utility taxes right now losing $360,000. So, you know, if it wasn't for some other collections, we would be, our budget would be in a poorer position. It just so happens that others have made that up. So when you take a budget on balance, you hope you have winners and gainers, well, you hope that it's all right on, but in this case, our franchise and utility tax are taking a beating right now. It could change in another year, it could go down more, but for those reasons, I think, I can't support it at this moment, but I think it may be a better discussion at the very end of our budget, because the thing that got us where we are was this sinking fund for the capital replacement, and the long-term disposition of our fund balance. And currently, when we mix all this up and we look at this new projection, I'd like to see that at 17% better. Currently, the projection given to us that we haven't really dove into is 13.61. So we're going to have to find something here to get us back to 17. That's 13.61 after 2022. So I would like to see that be to 17 before I vote on anything of that magnitude, but I appreciate you bringing that up and having a fair discussion on it.
Councilman Henry?
And also, let's just go ahead and make this plain. The city's not sitting on, and this is for the public as well, the city's not sitting on a surplus of money. The city is sitting on a surplus of projects that need to be done, that have been put to the back burner for years now, and this is since I've been on the council even. So let's make that plain and clear. We're not, we don't have a surplus of money here, so when I hear people say that, that's false. So we need to, that needs to be known. Thank you.
And also, for clarification, we could not, at this time, I believe, vote on the gross utilities, gross receipts utilities tax. That's, it comes out another time. We were voting on the possible, possibility of decreasing it. I believe that's correct.
There is a public hearing scheduled, the next council meeting, on the GRT tax.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. So we would be voting on the idea of decreasing it.
Right.
Okay. Councilman Graham?
I just want to thank Councilman Costalis for bringing that up. As you all know, I was one of the ones who was totally against raising the GRT tax from the 5.65 to 6%. So I'm still totally against- So I'm still totally against it being where it is. So if opportunity presents itself, I will vote to bring that back down to the 5.65%. And I, Councilman Henry, I know that we don't have a lot of money in our budget, totally I understand that. But I think that when citizens here, that we're sitting right now at a 20% fund balance, I think that sort of raises eyebrows as well, too. And so I just don't want it to look like that we're trying to set or raise, grow our budget on the backs of the citizens of Jefferson, so.
Councilman Henry?
And all due respect to that, that's simply not the case. I mean, we've already heard that city staff is putting together a list of projects now that need to, that need to happen. And happen more in the immediate future than, than later on. And so, so with that said, that fund balance is obviously going to get spent down. So that's not something that is just sitting there. And no, the city's not hoarding money. So that needs to be, that needs to be really made plain.
And from what I'm hearing, it sounds like everybody would like to potentially decrease it. It's a timing issue, is from what I'm hearing right now. So, Councilman Costalis?
Yes, I just brought this up because we did promise the citizens last year, we would bring it up and discuss it. Not necessarily we would keep it or drop it back, we would bring it up and discuss it, we would look at everything. To follow up on what Councilman Henry's been saying, several months ago, we looked at $15 million in stormwater projects we're behind, and they said that wasn't everything that they had in stormwater. And I know we can always use extra money for streets. So any extra, so-called extra funds we might have, we have good uses for them.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, at this time, we are going to vote to put this on to the parking lot. And we'll go with roll call, please.
Branch?
No.
Costalis?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
No.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Wiseman?
No.
Six no, three yes.
Six no, three yes, that fails. We'll move on this time. Is there anything else to add to the parking lot? Seeing nothing else? And like I said earlier, if you guys do want to bring up tonight for the ones that you added to the parking lot, we'll accept the offset if you want to do so. That's up to you. But we'll accept those proposals this time if anybody has one. Okay, so we'll wait till next meeting to do so. At this time, we'll talk about other topics. Anything else regarding the budget? I think Councilman Mahalovich had something earlier. Did you?
Well, I kind of got into it a little bit with the personnel. And having went through this, I first was a little taken back by how many positions we're funding. But then, when I started doing pencil to it, I'm satisfied with positions that we have identified as being less than what we had four years ago, including a significant decline in part-time positions. So maybe I voiced some concern about, I had concern about increasing that much staff, but I know we've, there's a point where you make do, make do, make do, and then all of a sudden, there's a time where the bill comes in and you really are behind, or you're getting complaints from our constituents. So at this, at this point, I don't have really, I'm in support of the additional positions being proposed, based on my analysis of the personnel sheet and rationale given by the departments.
Any other discussion? Just going to remind her, our next meeting's going to be August 18th, next Thursday, in these chambers. And at that time, we'll address these issues on the parking lot, starting from the top to the bottom. And sharpen your pencils, so hopefully, you guys can convince everyone as to add these items. So unless there's anything else, Councilman Mahalovich?
I don't think, I don't know that I have support on this, but I'm going to bring it up one more time. It's your night, chief. But the training and the essential functions training, funding of $100,000, basically, is new. It hadn't been done in the past, and all of a sudden, we're making this decision through, through the budget process. And I, again, voiced my concern about making policy through budget and not having it aired in public safety meetings and such. So last meeting, you said, I had it right and I had it wrong. That there's a portion that, that we have done in the past, and then there's, this is a new, a new policy decision. I don't know if it's possible for you to break that out, to find out how much was new and old, and if you can shed any light on, on the 100,000 being in training.
Well, I'll do my best. It is kind of a complicated situation, and it's really probably partially because of the unique way our shifts are structured, and because we have personnel that work 24-hour shifts. And so when we try to do training, anything outside of in-service training, it's difficult and sometimes problematic. And so there's two times where that's the case. One is when we bring somebody on and we, you know, we're onboarding them, and we've got some, some minimum things they have to have to function as a, as a member of the department. And so there's some things there, and we've had a lot of those things as we bring on new people, and we have some normal attrition. So those things are required items, they have to do. And in the past, we've always been able to, on occasion, as we bring new people on, absorb that cost, and those hourly costs, wages. And so that's part of it. And then the other part of it, I think, too, is that as our, as our mission becomes a little more complex, and as we do many more things, some of those proficiencies to maintain are also required. A lot of times, those classes aren't necessarily costing the department money, but getting the people there is difficult. We're trying to get them there while they're on duty, but there's other days where they're not on duty that we, we need to get them there as well. And so that's difficult when you do a 24-hour shift type of schedule. And it's become increasingly difficult as the position controls have tightened up, and really, the only hours that we're allotted are the hours that, that they're scheduled to work, those 24 hours on their normal shift schedule. So the training itself is also sometimes very physical, and there's risk to the personnel. So if they were to be injured, even if they voluntarily went off-duty, which we've done in the past a great deal, they would be somewhat in limbo, I would say, because they would be attending a sanctioned class, sometimes in uniform, sometimes in equipment that we issue, but they would be going on a voluntary basis. And so the question has always come up internally, and we've asked legal for their advice, and it's been kind of a, I would say, less-than-ideal scenario. So we had concerns for those folks doing that very practical, skill-based, and sometimes dangerous training. As far as the numbers themselves go, the 99,000, I know it does seem like a large number. And the way we broke that out is we said, well, we really need about $68,000 to do this. And talking to the folks in finance, they said, well, to get to the 99, or to get to the 68, it really costs you about 99 because those wages also impact other things inside of personnel services, like FICA, Medicare, you know, all those type of other withholdings. So the money itself identified is really about 68,000 in wages, and of that, we estimate about 18,000 of that, the stuff that we've kind of, we've traditionally been able to support just through the budget, the overall personnel services line items and category. And then about 50,000 of that would be to hopefully, a small, very small percentage. And remember, we're talking about, you know, 75 people, so it's not a lot of money per person, but we might be able to pick out one or two classes per year to say, if you're going to attend that class all week long, we're able to compensate you for the days that you're not scheduled to work, which would be the offset days. Typically, on a week-long class, the most they would work would be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, if it fell perfectly on their schedule. We would then be able to compensate, if it was approved, the Tuesday and Thursday, just the classroom hours, the eight hours roughly typically, those classes. That would allow us to take advantage of a lot of local offerings, like the Division of Fire Safety, or at Fire School, that are offered here. It's just trying to get people in those seats to get that really important training. And we would, of course, seek the input of the firefighters, you know, to kind of formulate the best way to administer this. But ultimately, we would kind of see it as a management right to determine which classes had the priority for those people. And I'd be happy to answer any further. I'm not sure if that helps. It's, it's probably about a three-hour conversation I'm trying to have in three minutes.
Sorry, but...
I wanted to add some, did you say it was clarification? That's mandatory voluntary training?
I would say that we would nev, we might voluntold some people to go, if that makes any sense, depending on what the needs of the department were.
I was trying to get legally.
Yeah.
If we tell them that they have to do it, and it's mandatory, I'd see it legal. But if it's voluntary, it kind of takes away from that legal side, is all I was saying.
I understand the concern, and it's a little bit of both. Because for new people, we would tell them they had to attend.
It'd be nice to have that separated out, so we knew it would be, make a little bit clearer to us.
Councilman Mahalovich?
And I appreciate the safety factor and the potential liability on the city, but all of a sudden now, and it wasn't last year, or the year before, maybe it was and it wasn't, but to me, to bring this forward at this point and have a three-hour discussion in this, in this setting is part of my point, by the way. All due respect. For off-duty firemen to attend this in the past was voluntary. When they attend under these conditions, will they be time and a half then?
No, not unless they exceeded the given number of hours in their FLSA cycle. And again, it gets even more complicated when we talk about the number of hours in a certain pay cycle. But the hours themselves would not be time and a half, at least from our perspective, unless they exceeded that, that maximum number, which could happen on occasion, depending on their cycle, and could also be impacted by how much minimum staffing they would work, extra shifts they worked, picked up along the way. So it's, it is a pretty complicated calculation when you look at all those different variables that could come into play.
If I could just say, this one was important to me, and Chief Schofield and I did talk about it last year. And we talk about several things department-wise that are items that may not rise to the level of putting it on a, on a budget, understanding the priorities that, that you all have. So just because something wasn't brought up in a prior year doesn't mean that it wasn't a priority. And I think that this is the place to have the discussion. I don't know that it's a policy piece, I think it's a money piece. I think really, it is an issue of training, particularly if, in my opinion, when we have people attending training for which we are not compensating them, I think there may be some other concerns there that, you know, that raises some other concerns. So if you want to separate that out, that's certainly fine. But so that's why I put that on there, is it was, I thought, the training aspect of that, for that volunteer portion that people, you know, call it volunteer, but the volunteer piece that they're doing, we're not getting paid for that.
I'd like to add to that. Now, I don't know if it's comparing apples to apples, but in my industry, I'm required to take training. And sometimes it's voluntary, sometimes it's not. And sometimes I don't get paid for it. So, I mean, it's, I guess, what I'm trying to get is try to figure out what's being paid for, what's not being paid for, what's voluntary, what's not voluntary. And it'd be nice to know what the difference is, and maybe help us, maybe clarify things. I mean, we can decide later what to do, but if we wanted to cut out the piece that was mandatory, then I think maybe we ought to address that first, and then the voluntary stuff, address that separate, if at all possible.
Councilman Henry?
Councilman, I just became confused. What are you saying?
Well, some of this is voluntary, some of this is mandatory. And if we're mandating that they go to training, then we ought to pay for it, is what I'm saying. But if it's voluntary, I'm not sure, that's another discussion, is what I'm saying. Sorry for the confusion there.
And a portion of voluntary, I don't want to make it sound like it's, you know, community association manager training or something. I mean, it's, it's related, in some cases, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but in some cases, it's training where it benefits that particular individual as they may be thinking about moving up in the organization to other positions. And so I don't think it's beneficial to the organization, really, to tell people, well, you don't get any of that additional training in anticipation of promotion to that next level until such time as that, that opportunity occurs. Because then we'll, we'll have a whole bunch of people that can never meet that. I think the opportu, so voluntary may mean it's not something that is necessarily directly related to that particular job that they're doing right then and there, although in some cases it is. But it can be other training that benefits the organization.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
That's even more confusing now, right?
Any other discussion on that particular topic? Seeing none, we'll move on to any other topics you guys would like to bring up regarding the budget. Or a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn? I said before we adjourn.
We know what you heard over there.
And I will be making these announcements as we meet tonight in our council meeting and for next week. Councilman Costalis and I will be hosting a Fourth Ward Town Hall meeting on next Saturday, the 20th, at 1:00 PM at the Hyde Park Training Facility. So we'll be making announcements about that throughout next week as well, too. Now, I move for adjournment.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.